Well.
I think they're early on the next.
Yeah.
So seven AM, we have to be here? Um, do we have the flat irons? Are the schools, I'm assuming?
Yeah, those were the schools. I'm not sure where they're at, I guess right now, but Alex, I'll find out.
Okay. 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 So if everybody who can be here, be here at seven, we'll get everything ready. And then if somebody wants to, if you guys want to have Brandy put that on the Facebook page, then we're gonna do it again this year. She disappeared too fast, so.
Yep, I'm writing it down.
Isn't she fancy?
All right. Um, anybody else have anything for community forum? Conflict of interest declarations?
Nothing that I know of from our side.
Okay. See anything that was? Um, there are two additions to the agenda. On six point five, we added Buildings and Grounds Committee Report. And on eleven, we have approve contracts. Um, so do I have a motion to adopt the agenda with the additions?
Motion.
Motion by Ashley, second by Brooke. All those in favor say aye.
All right.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Communication and discussion items, celebrations.
Other than the fact that school's starting? Really, uh, not a ton going on right now, but, uh, you know, like, like I said, I'm excited that school's starting, activities are starting, so life could start again.
Um, administrative reports, business manager.
I don't have anything.
Okay. Elementary principal?
So on my report, you guys all have that. So we received a new math and vision curriculum, and actually we used our S R funds for that. So we were able to buy both for our, our elementary and middle school, both reading last year, and then our math curriculum this year. That's what we did with some of that money. Um, all the schedules have been completed. Teachers are in their room. They just should have sent out welcome letters, or they'll be doing that this week if they have not, so people know what class they're in. This morning, we had the supply drive-through. Um, I had some staff members show up and help. That was great. From seven to nine tomorrow night, we are gonna be open from four to six. Happy families coming. So we'll get that up and going. Obviously, there's no behavior report. Um, I went to the joint convention and listened to Ruby Payne. Um, she, this time, I didn't know it was gonna be the same thing. She is actually a really good speaker. She's written a lot of books. But this time she, and of course Tom was there too, but she talks about, um, lower income families normally, but this time she really talked about the difference between the male and female brain and the male and kind of how that develops and why we're in a place where we're rainbow, we have transgender, and so that was very, very interesting. It's, she's very good. I could watch her for operating at the top.
She's good.
And then you guys have, I updated elementary, middle school, and preschool handbooks. And then the title on branch is in for review, so that's all I have right now.
Perfect. Thank you. Secondary principal?
Yeah, a little bit of everything, but, uh, in your handouts. Still going through school policy. We have the agenda ready to go. I was having issues with the cop here, so I didn't get that, uh, out, but the staff does have it for the agenda for the three days of end service. Back-to-school night, of course, and Jamie was able, uh, to help secure hot dogs and all that good stuff for the back-to-school night. And wondering if four hundred hot dogs is enough, or do we need to maybe look at some burgers or something else too? But again, uh, it's not an issue. You know, we can, we can figure that out in the next couple of days and, and, and get it going. The fact is, is that we're gonna be up and running. Really looking forward to back-to-school night. Uh, so the first day, of course, is the sixteenth. We'll do a one-thirty dismissal. Uh, out of building meetings. I had a core meeting, uh, just to get a chance to meet everybody. It was all of a five-minute meeting. And, and again, it was, well, we plan on purchasing a car, or we, you know, just really basic things that did not necessarily get into educational items per se. Uh, then, uh, other things, I, I did meet with Dr. Steinhoff from Huron. We discussed the, uh, busing routes and the pickup points. He has no issues with our pickup points. I would be honest with you and say I have issues from the standpoint of, uh, just on the busing. But, uh, on the busing routes of, that's a ton of pickup points. It's a ton. I'm not used to that. So I guess that's something that all have to work through, but, uh, you know, we pick up our first student at six fifty-five in the morning. That's an issue to me. But, uh, again, those are some items that we can talk about for the future. And then, but the other thing, we had a discussion on, uh, career and technical education. He, uh, was a career and technical education superintendent in his former district before being the superintendent and then coming to Huron. And I've really enjoyed our C T E offerings, but we actually discussed, uh, the possibility of teaming up and in a sense maybe becoming satellites for one another. You know, if we have something in the ag field that they don't have, uh, I know that he has a, a mobile meat processing lab. But, but little things like that, if we can start sharing resources, I, I think that's a great way to build a relationship. So, very good meeting. Uh, met for the two eighty-one conference meeting on Wednesday last week, and that went off very well. Austin was introduced to the world of, uh, the conference meeting. Uh, my big thing was, uh, we got the poll updated for the conference, uh, for the conference track meet, which is a big deal. I said, you know, just because you don't do it doesn't mean we shouldn't get the points for it. And I said, there are years when we don't have good herb alerts and you do, and you get all through all the places, and we don't get any. So, but it wasn't managed that we should have that, so that was good. And then when Javelin comes, we'll, we'll do that as well, just so you have an idea. And then the A S B S D Joint Convention, uh, went to a few, uh, breakout sessions after Ruby Payne, which were very good, just looking at some possible resources for us as we, uh, you know, continue into, uh, the school year. Pandemic issues, social emotional issues, just family issues in general. And, uh, picked up on some good resources. That would be, uh, some no-charge things that, so that's, uh, that's playing my tune. As far as the school plant maintenance and safety, I met with, uh, Pitts concerning doors in the elementary wing, and we're still playing a little bit of phone tag, but it's just a matter of, uh, getting the doors, we're looking at Christmas break to get them in, but then also the hardware. They need to be I D E A compliant, so levers instead of knobs. And then I want them to lock on the inside in case of school emergencies, you name it. So we're dealing with that right now. Uh, the bus barn, uh, J C Electric was here on the first and second of the month. Uh, and then the construction contractor, uh, P Sec was here. Uh, we're still not done. So that, that was a phone call today, and so he will be coming out. I took pictures of the areas that were not completed to my liking. And we're gonna do the job right, so.
How close are you getting?
Very close, very close.
Is high school, you think?
Uh, I'm thinking he's coming out tomorrow. So, good, 'cause it's time to get the buses back in the barn.
Are there garage door openers?
Uh, we do have them, but again, overhead door is backed up, but I told Shane, stay on them. Stay on them, and, and so he's doing that. And, uh, you know, sometimes you just gotta squeak a little bit in order to get things done, and I'm okay doing that. I'm okay doing that. Uh, let's see. I talked with Derek Booted from Mammoth, so he does have the geological survey, uh, scheduled, ready to go. And, uh, so that's gonna be good. And then, uh, the football field. I had talked with, uh, Jamie on the phone about, uh, the football field and the crab grass and the buffalo grass out there, things like that. Uh, Dietz did come out today. When I gave him the size of the football field, it was, oh, it's about a half acre. I'm like, yeah, that's more than that. And so when he came out and measured, he says, that's about two acres. Yep, football field is a hundred and twenty by fifty-three, and everything else around. And so eighteen fifty is roughly per application. And, uh, he would recommend the spring pre-emergent and the fall. And so moving forward, he goes, if you choose to go with me, I would recommend doing the fall this year, since you only have three home games, but we do the fall. And then just make sure that you're watering the heck out of it, because the biggest thing is, is that, uh, people don't water it enough.
So eighteen fifty for the whole year then?
No, that's per application.
And he's saying two applications?
Two applications is what he was, so, uh, when he, when he gave me the initial quote, I'm like, God, that's really low. But when he saw it, he said, okay. So again, I'm fine with it. I am waiting for, um, Arnie's acres to, uh, to come out. I just, I wanna give everybody a chance just to take a look at it and tell me the differences between chemical sprays and granulars and all of that other stuff. You know, geez, we have a guy here that could probably tell me about some of that too, right? Okay, so, uh, that. Uh, football field, I did get, uh, I can't remember if it was Ralph or if it was Hayden that said, we're having some issues with lights at the field. So I called Shane and said, you need to work on this, get it taken care of. And I think maybe it was a breaker situation that the football coaches didn't know about. There's only one light, one light bulb that's not working. So we're okay, and we can take care of that. Uh, informational items, cross-country coach, still looking, but Jamie might have a lead for me on that. Uh, student services director, update light ticket, and then paraprofessional pay are all items that I have sent out to you by email. So I really want to encourage all of you to be checking your email, uh, because for me to make individual phone calls gets to be a little long. Uh, what I will typically do, like if there's a committee meeting, I might talk to one of you guys and then just say, hey, make sure you talk to the others. But, uh, email is the best way that I can get through to you guys. And then if you wanna text back or whatever, that's great too. I'm good with that. Uh, the trophy cases, uh, Jamie gave me a lead on a guy that does some really good woodwork, but I still want to look at doing the plaques in the hallway between the school and the gym. It's just a really cool place to where you could show it better. And then I even thought in the future, we could discuss that gorgeous, uh, I, I love that fake stone, look at gray stone. That would be really cool if we started like a Wilsie Wessington Hall of Fame for academics, athletics, and activities. That would be the place to put it. That would be gorgeous. So, but that's down the road. Uh, as far as open enrollment, I have approved five and denied five due to, uh, prohibitive class sizes and, uh, not a suitable placement, or we don't have the ability to give that person what they need. And then, uh, I have a student starting after Thanksgiving break. I will discuss that in exact. And then the other thing that I'll wanna talk about is a number of coaches that we have in the high school and base it on the number of participants that we have. Because we get to a point of, and I'll just give you the number, thirty. Thirty tends to be a pretty good cutoff, uh, when you get there, whether it's football in the nine different positions, volleyball in the six different positions, track with sixteen different disciplines. There's a lot of things that we need to consider from even I would call it a legal standpoint. But again, those are discussion items. Uh, I'm always sure that there are things that I'm missing, so if you ever have any questions whatsoever on any of those items, feel free to call, stop by, you name it. And, uh, I'll be more than happy to talk with you. That's what I have for now.
Um, I do have one. Um, Jamie had called me earlier and said, for Thursday night, if there is a group in the school that is already here and may be easily accessible, um, if they want to go out and serve the meal and ask for free little donations, they can do that to raise some funds. Or if we wanna do it for...
I could talk to Kathy. That might be something like National Honor Society or something like that. Might, I'll do, let me talk to Kathy.
Elementary principal retirement fund.
I mean, I was thinking more of the track, but.
Yeah, exactly.
Must come right out and throw that out. I mean, hint, hint, we are.
Yeah.
Track.
So. What, uh, it's just hard to get those kids here because they practice all day.
It is.
And then
Yes.
they're coming, some of them, the high school especially, some of them come in, some of them don't come in. But it's hard to get them, I mean, I have my own, I mean, you guys have kids. It's hard to get them to come back in to serve if they've had a rough practice all day, so. I know we talked about having a committee.
But it's actually, so.
It is. You'll have lots of students or lots of teachers.
We talked about having a committee for that track. We did.
Yep, and we can get rolling on that, so. Uh, there has been a lot of items that, not that they've been neglected, I just haven't been able to get to them. We've been tying up a lot of loose ends.
So no, I just wanted to throw that out there. Um, he did ask me to. Um, so if you just let us know if, if all of us have to be there, or if you have a group, or if I can come throw the hot dogs on, um, or if you have other plans.
What, what, what's the time of that on Thursday?
Six to eight.
I would like to host our F F A if they're gonna be dropped to a national convention this year.
Yeah.
That would be.
That's another way to make, you know, who, who knows what you could make?
Yeah. So maybe if you just reach out to some of the advisors, they can come up with.
Julie's here. She's a host of.
But if I'm gonna throw twenty bucks in, I'm gonna eat my share of hot dogs too.
Well, you just don't make, you don't, you don't eat three hundred.
I just don't eat first.
Yeah. So, um, I did tell Jamie I'd come set up. I am supposed to be leaving for camping on Thursday. Um, he will be back in time to take down. So if we can just get a couple more board members to maybe help set up and then help take down.
And I don't have an issue cooking.
Okay.
'Cause I'll see everybody then.
Yes. So them were just some things I needed to.
Are you needing like roast roast or do you have?
Um, I was.
Well, we have those flat irons.
Yep.
Oh, or we can just throw them all on a roast roast too.
We could do that too. Whatever's easy.
Then we're not trying to grill four hundred hot dogs?
Yeah.
When you said four hundred, I was like, hmm. But, and either way, I mean, we can throw.
I mean, I think I can gather enough host of people up, but, uh, it, um, yeah. Okay. So whatever, if you wanna, whatever you think. Should we, you know, we talked about that being from six to eight. Do you think that we should change that? I'm just thinking out loud here. If I bring my kids, let's say I'm bringing my kids at four o'clock.
Yep.
Right? So I'm probably gonna wanna eat at five if I can. I'm not gonna wanna wait till six if I've got little kids running around here. So that.
I think if we can do it the whole entire time, that'd probably be okay. And then you don't, I mean, otherwise you're either gonna have people who come and leave because they come early, or you're going to have absolutely nobody here from four till five thirty, and then everybody's gonna bombard, bombard the classrooms.
I think that, that's.
Your, your open house thing starts at four?
Yeah. If we were open during like four thirty.
Even if we would go by fourth, yeah, fourth, or we'd be at six thirty or.
Well, we, we, we can just stay open as long as we need to stay open.
Yeah.
You know, that is a quick trip down to the Roland, be able to get stuff, and that's what we do.
Okay, so I'll come.
I need them three back there. So I can, you know, to me, you're actually at thirty.
Okay, I'll be here at three thirty. We'll get everything set up.
And then if you wanna go till eight for advertising, we're gonna start earlier, or do you want to be seven?
Get them going. And seven, it's already, if we start at four thirty, that's.
Maybe two. So who knows that kind of, you know, five thirty, five forty-five, we'll have time to eat from six to seven and talk for the trip.
So if you wanna have Brandy or whoever, I just thought my go-to was Brandy. Um, if she wants to make up some, like a flyer or something, well, we would like to do three thirty to seven.
Three thirty?
No, four thirty.
Four thirty.
Okay. Is that really early?
I'll be here at three thirty. Ashley will be here at three thirty.
Okay.
Four thirty to seven.
Four thirty to seven.
Um, whatever club, just make sure she puts on, that it's a free little donation.
I'll talk to Kathy, just to make sure.
But.
Just let me know.
But mark, mark down host of.
I'll mark Kathy's.
Um, that way people are aware before they come then.
So we have hot dogs. Do we have anything else?
Chips.
Chips.
Right, Jamie?
Yeah, Jamie's got hot dogs, chips, and then we said water too.
So I get the digital bags and chips, lemonade.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's, it's, it's a good National Guard thing. It's the same thing they do with the state football playoffs. It's wonderful.
So we probably need plates, napkins.
Plates and napkins?
Yep. Ketchup, mustard. Sorry if you're making a list.
I make them a list.
Thank you. If you guys need them, I can certainly go to town and pick them up too.
Yeah, and, and I'm here, so.
Okay. All right. I think that was it for that. Mid-century report.
Are they doing bonds? Sorry.
Yes, for the hot dogs there.
They're doing buffalo, but that's one issue. They wanna show up and I'll have bonds then.
Um, we did not.
Yeah.
Am I still on that?
Yes.
I'd have to check the, uh.
Yeah, we did not have a meeting.
Yeah.
Um, core report?
Unless we want a car.
I saw that car. No, thank you.
Yeah.
No, yes, well, as is.
They definitely get the wear out of their cars.
Yeah.
Um, transportation committee. Jamie has asked that we maybe consider selling. I got, can you guys hear him?
Yeah, I can hear him fine.
Okay. You wanna talk, Jamie?
Sure.
Okay.
Um, I talked to Mr. Rice earlier, and we talked about the two Suburbans. Um, in my opinion, neither of which are real cheap means of transportation. Uh, we discussed the car is getting some age on it, and I guess in my opinion, I would like to surplus the Suburbans. He has checked on replacing the Suburbans with another larger van. I mean, you can get seven people in a Suburban and seven people in a van. You can get fifteen people in a van, but you can't get fifteen people in a Suburban. And if you have to have horrible drive, we should probably not be taking kids out on the road anyhow. Um, he did run into some problems with the, with us getting a new fifteen-packs van. Um, I'll let him touch on that. But right now, there's a pretty good value on used Suburbans. And I guess in my, I'd rather see the school, or the two Suburbans get an additional fifteen-packs van and then replace the car with a newer light model vehicle before that one's completely wore out. The, the cost per mile on a Suburban, you know, we're in that hundred and fifty thousand-ish mile range. I mean, you start having troubles with the Suburban, you know, it's, it's a thousand dollars every time it shot. So just wanted to bring that up for discussion. And I'll, I'll race talk about the, the fifteen-packs van, why we can't.
Thank you, Jamie. Uh, okay, so I talked with Joey Lamb out in Oneida, who has had the state bids in the past. And one of the things is federal law is set to where they cannot sell, uh, fourteen, fifteen passenger vans to school districts new, but they can't sell used ones. Right now, we're gonna be hard-pressed to find any dealers in the state that have them. Uh, the same thing goes for state bids on some of the vehicles. The Chevy dealership that he also has has typically done the Malibus and the Impalas on a state rate, but that's running out. And again, trying to get them right now is virtually impossible. So I have been looking on the internet at non-C D L buses as well that are handicap accessible, things like that. You never know when we're gonna run into that either. But, um, I've been finding fourteen passenger ones. Uh, the problem is, is that you're gonna have to travel to Ohio or some of these other places, but you can get a used one for around thirty-two thousand, which is not bad. Typically, these ones that come in with these companies do get reconditioned. Uh, depending on how old you wanna go. I saw a two thousand two that only had six thousand miles on it. You know, and, and, and so we all know certain things, even though they're twenty years old, rubber goes bad, things like that. But if they've been reconditioned, then that's what you're looking at. Uh, right now, we're really gonna be lucky if we see the minibus that we've already ordered by January. It's backed up that bad. I do have another contact by the name of Shane Boss, Doug's son, who was at Wessington. And he does do Dakota Bus Service, and in Hurley, he did have some used buses, but he's getting a premium for those right now, too. And I do not know what his inventory is, if any, right now. So I just wanted to give you a heads up that, uh, Jamie and I have talked, and that, uh, we do need to be proactive and just looking forward. You know, do we need something right this minute? Obviously, we don't. But that's when, uh, we're actually gonna have to jump at some of these things when they open, because we just don't know what's gonna happen. Supply chain, supply chain, excuse me, and, you know, any other things, uh, coming down the road?
This is probably a thing in the past, but years ago, like the state vehicle fleet, you know, they used to roll those around when they were pretty new. Maybe they don't even do that. That used to be a good resource.
Yes.
Maybe it's not anymore.
Huron and Rapid City still have those.
They do that in Pierce still.
Yeah, and, uh.
Maybe that's not as suitable.
But, uh, there's a lot of things there. They just haven't had the passenger vans or the buses. They've had about anything else, you know, get a used Suburban.
Right.
But again, that's something that we really don't need. So, yeah, you're absolutely right. I still look at those. I get the emails from them too. Because if we can get something for a better price, absolutely.
A lot of those state vehicles too, they went to like compact cars.
Mm-hmm.
Didn't used to be the case.
You know, the other thing too is like, uh, I used to talk with the track coach at U S D, because, you know, living down in that area, you should see the fleet that they have. Every once in a while, they have something, and you're like, hmm, so. It's just a matter of, you know, sometimes it takes a little luck too of getting the timing done.
Right.
So. Jamie, is that about right?
Sounds good.
Okay.
Um, on that is the Buildings and Grounds Committee. Um, I have talked to Jamie. I would like to see the stuff in the old gym. We gone through and maybe surplused. Uh, what we don't need, I went to pick up Cooper's uniform with him for football, and there was truly, you could walk up the stairs, and that was as dang near as far as you could get. Um, I don't know where all that stuff came from, but if, if it's been there for, if we don't need it, I don't feel like, I feel like we could at least get something out of it.
Some of it is COVID-related, you know, the regulations that they put out. Uh, Lindsay and I have talked about that too. Not to a great extent, but a decent extent to where, uh, put a hold on ordering any desks until we can see what we can use from that and what the teachers want. And then it's, it's surplus and let's get them out of here.
Yep.
You know, again, I use the term not to be disrespectful, but I'm not gonna stick stuff in the shelter belt thinking I'm gonna use it.
Yes.
Jamie, when we talked the other day, you mentioned getting ahold of, uh,
Oh, yeah, you must.
Did, uh, you have any luck with that?
Yeah, I got a one of them, uh, this afternoon, uh, you know, told him kinda a lot of the stuff we have. And he asked if we have vehicles, and I told him, you know, about our Suburbans, but I had to, you know, that had to be a hard decision. Um, you know, he, he wasn't super interested until I said that, you know, there may be a bus that needs to be surplused, um, and the car and the two Suburbans. I said, I'd have to get back to him on it, and, uh, and he was interested. He said normally, uh, he does a ten percent. Anywhere ten to fifteen, you know, if we're not doing the vehicles, it might take a fifteen to eighteen percent commission to get him to come over. But he basically comes over, takes all the pictures, writes up the description. He said it takes about five days. He's got an online auction. Two weeks later, uh, done deal, and we get a check. People pick their stuff up. So I s, I told him, you know, it could be as fully as two weeks in the school. I mean, two to three weeks, we should know whether we have got enough stuff in the school, and if we don't need it, let's get rid of it.
Thank you.
You know, and along, on the Buildings and Grounds Committee, along with that, um, you know, I see no reason not to, to pull the basketball hoops out of that old gym. I mean, what our plans are for it with the, you know, the wave room and everything else, it's never gonna be used for a, a basketball gym again. You know, there'd probably be some value to the, the state championship teams for one of their old backboards from back in. You know, there probably be some value to the, the state championship teams for one of their old backboards from back in the day.
We won't be able to put those vehicles on there though, right?
No.
That's gonna be a time-consuming process, I'm sure. We can't dump those until we get a plan to replace them, unfortunately.
So that's too bad that that.
Right. Thank you, Jamie.
You're welcome.
All right, so anything else for those two? Topics. Moving on, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Jim. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Kevin. All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Didn't pull anything off. Action items, new and unfinished business, approve open enrollments.
Uh, since you have, uh, at this point given me the authority to move forward with that, uh, I, I know that we would have to do a reading on that at some point. Uh, we didn't have to bring that with us. Or first reading on that. So, could, could we move forward with one more month of, if I see anything, you guys just let me move on that? And go that route. Like I said in my principal report, I approved five and I denied five. And so far, that's been working good and, and I am getting records and going through that and then talking with Lindsay about, you know, if there's sped services, things like that. Are we able to get an approval or anything, so? Yeah, so, uh, a- as long as we can do that, I would be fine with that. And then we'll get you to get the reading on policy. I, I apologize for not remembering that.
No, I missed it too, so that was my fault. Um, we'll add the two policies next month for the first reading that we discussed, or that we met over.
Okay.
So at this point, we still need to approve the five you have? Do I have a motion to approve five open enrollments?
You, you, you don't have to when you give me that option. But you can go ahead and do that if you'd like to, but in the future, you don't. When you, when you give me that authority, would you?
Didn't we vote to give you that authority?
Yes, you did for this month.
For the, just the.
For this month, but in the future, I'll be able to do that and I will do it the same way all the time.
So we need to make a motion for another month then?
That's, yeah, that's what we would do. Make a motion to extend up to the September, up to the September board meeting for me to take care of open enrollments.
Okay. Okay, motion by Jim. Do I have a second? Second by Brooke. We have a motion to approve the ability for Mr. Rice to approve open enrollments until the September board meeting. Motion by Jim, second by Brooke. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Approve ca- handbooks.
Basically, the uh, the high school handbook, the only change that we're gonna make, because I told you I was gonna see how things work. The only change in the handbook for the high school is my name for the previous administrator. That's it.
And for the elementary? But you probably in yours too, because we went through and did the discipline plan. So that would be a new one in there too. So I think that's the old one in there yet, because we did that in the middle of the year. So we'll update both of those.
Yeah.
Um, the one I sent to you, mine should be all done for the middle school, elementary, and then the preschool one there. Really just that staff, changes in staff, changes in schedules, things like that.
Okay. Do we have to look at the COVID stuff?
Yep.
Yep, and I agree, yeah.
Or we can do that.
Yes. So, again, this is, this is the plan right here that has been adopted and approved. So it has gone from uh, August twenty twenty, October, November, March, July twenty-one, August twenty-one. Uh, it was updated in January of twenty twenty-two. We need to just make sure that we are on track. And again, the only updates that are made, the years and the name. Other than that, we follow the recommendations of the Department of Health. And uh, we will not be close contact tracing, anything like that. And we have this thing called a school nurse, which is really awesome.
I agree.
So that really helps us out a lot.
Can you send that policy to Jim? He should be the only one who doesn't have it.
It's actu- it's, it's actually on the website, but yes, I can send it to you. If you go in under the search tool, just say return to school, it pops right up for you.
I can't find anything on the website. All right, do I have a motion to approve the handbooks?
So moved.
Motion by Kevin. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ashley. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Approval officials, babe?
I am going to ask for one more month. Uh, Amy and I had a discussion and a- again, that was a, oh geez. So I have the distribution list for all the athletic directors in the state. And I went to the Class B and said, here's what Wozie Westington is looking for. And so we made it very clear on the athletic activities, you know, whether it's comp cheer or, or any of those things, what are you paying officials, what are you paying sideline workers, what are you paying all of these people? I wanna make sure that we are in the ballpark and, and, and go from there. So I would, I'll start getting replies on that as early as tomorrow. Just to see what they're doing. And a lot of times, uh, like what I used to do is I used to just send, I have a sheet that says this is what we pay. Here you go.
What are you gonna do for the home football game before the September meeting then?
Well, uh, we, we can still talk about that and if we do need, I'm just gonna find out what's been paid in the past. That one, I'm just gonna, okay, this looks good. Or I'm gonna add five bucks.
Is that the only home event?
Yeah.
I think until, I don't really like the, um, except for the officials that come from out of town. Everyone else, they just all don't get paid until the season.
Okay. Yep. Yeah, so that's going all the way down into the middle school. You know, what are we paying for all of this all the way through?
So you just wanna move that?
I would love to move it to October. I just wanna make sure that we're not being too chintzy.
Okay.
To October or September?
Or excuse me, September, yes, thank you.
Just next Friday. There's like a football game. But I think until we approve the new rates, while he comes up with something.
You, you, like, like I said, I don't see it being exorbitant by any stretch of the imagination. Uh, you know, we're, we're, we're probably in the ballpark, but I just wanna make sure. Little things too that I've talked with Austin about, so just to kinda give you an idea. I would like to find a place that can put our Werbert logo like a, like a screen print on some cheap towels. And so when the officials come, they have the towel, the Snickers bar and this, and then they can keep the towel because they're cheap. But it's just something that's, I think that's kinda cool.
So we're okay not to approve anything and you can still pay next Friday? Okay. Um, update on playground and track. Sorry. Do you have an update on the track playground?
Uh, yeah, the uh, G O survey. We've, we've gotta do that first and then, then we'll be going. So I mentioned that in the, I believe I mentioned that in my report.
Okay.
So yeah. So just, so in the meantime, I did talk to Shane and said, can we get stuff just evened out with the field right now? Or excuse me, the, the playground right now? Just take care of it and get it ready to go. And he said, absolutely.
So we're waiting for that survey to do the playground too, I assume?
Yes, cause I wanna make sure that's what we're gonna do. Again, drainage, drainage, drainage. And make sure that's taken care of.
All right. We are gonna go into executive session. From personnel, South Florida Code of Law one dash twenty-five dash two. Do I have a motion? Go into executive session, seven forty-nine. Motion by Ashley, do I have a second?
Second.
By Brooke, do you have any? All those in favor say aye. So Jim, I forgot to ask you last one. I was just moving. Do I have a motion to approve the following? The para-leveling pay Mr. Bliss five thousand dollars for elementary music. Mrs. Hyder, um, for a title sped director at head coach pay times two. Nancy Clouser for kitchen staff at eighteen dollars per hour and Brandy Kelsey for live ticket at head coach pay.
Motion?
Motion by Ashley, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Brooke. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. All right, I have a motion to adjourn the meeting. Motion by Jamie.
I'll second.
Second by Jim. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you, Jamie.